Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, June 20th, 2018 meeting, Commissioner Lundey.
Our inspirational word for the day, let love be your greatest aim.
And I have the dog today. Hi there. Our featured dog this week is a pit bull mix, he's about five years old, extremely friendly, he was found in Lorraine, and he's available this Friday looking for a good home, this is a great dog. Look at him, see? I think whoever wins the coloring contest should take the dog home, though. What do you think, guys? Alright, if this isn't quite your cup of tea, we've got plenty of other dogs, come on buddy, let's go.
It reminds me of the Dog Whispers dog, called him Daddy, I think?
Something, yeah.
Good dog.
Yeah, very nice dog.
Madam Clerk?
We do have a presentation at 9:45 for the calendar contest winners. Under Resolutions Number One, we have no investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla, I do have a number of personnel issues, potential hires, purchasing, community development, maybe it's solid waste, also two pending legal matters and a sale of real estate. All of those matters will allow under Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and talk about those matters that I've identified, thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading on the minutes of June 13?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Boyer &amp; Cool Home for Funerals, Lorraine, for an indigent veteran, James Alex Kowalski Jr., Alariah Unicorns with URC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Adopting the procedures from Lorraine County Chiefs Law Enforcement Association and Lorraine County Fire Chiefs Association on placing the name of deceased Lorraine County law enforcement officers and firefighters and emergency medical service personnel on Lorraine County law enforcement firefighter memorial wall.
So moved.
Second.
Jim, you want to talk about this, how your discussions were with police and fire in regards to how they're going to, who goes on the wall so there's no misconceptions? I mean, we're gonna have some that are, may have been Lorraine County residents but aren't gonna be on the wall because it wasn't in Lorraine County or they were working for a Lorraine County.
You want me to explain that? You just explained it.
I think you did more legally.
The memorial belongs to the county, belongs vis-à-vis the Commissioners to the residents of Lorraine County. However, selection of the, those brave souls that go on that wall, we'll have the brass tags, they're not gonna be on right now, we're having those made, we just finished the list. We have the list for fire and police of the fallen. The selection and how that happens will be through the Lorraine County Police Chiefs Association and the Lorraine County Fire Chiefs Association, and they have adopted standards that they use, those standards pretty much are recognized nationally as guidelines so that we don't, do not get into a push and pull on who gets on the wall and who doesn't. We'll have very limited ability and so we should have limited ability to decide those matters. Hopefully, they'll be able to take care of any disagreements among themselves so that we don't have to get involved, that's why I asked that they develop these standards and that we ratify them by resolution so that there was a clear understanding of the criteria and an operating procedure for this. I do not want what is going to be a wonderful memorial to those that have given the ultimate sacrifice to become a disagreement point where it becomes a political football. I don't mean just by politicians, I mean with anybody. So, that's really what it's all about, and I was pretty insistent upon this before we actually did the dedication, and I really like working with those associations, but there are sometimes disagreements between what they want. And also, you know, we've included EMS on the fire side, so they take care of fire and EMS, and then of course you have the police, that is just the police side.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I had someone ask whose names will be on the wall, and I said, referred them to the Police Chief and the Fire Chiefs Association so that they could explain what that's going to be, and, but it's important to work this all out in advance, I mean, for instance, if somebody's from Lorraine County and, you know, sadly, they die in the line of duty in North Carolina, that's probably, a name that probably wouldn't be eligible.
For the most part, I don't believe so. Again, they, the associations probably will occasionally have to mitigate or extend the weight circumstances, but it's best that the law enforcement take care of law enforcement and fire take care of fire and EMS, and we have little to do other than go out there and pay our respects. So, we're looking forward to our, you know, we're gonna read off all the names Saturday night of the fallen as far back in Lorraine County's history as we can. There's been a lot of research done, I'm sure that there may be something we missed, but these guys have worked hard to go all the way back to the beginning of Lorraine County and try to capture those brave souls that fell in the line of duty.
Looking forward to Saturday night.
Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under job and family authorization agreement with Cronus Inc. in the amount of $17,502.53 for the annual cloud hosting WTC of the Cronus Timekeeping System. Authorized Director Dex Cambeath with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve Amherst City 2018 Community Incentive Grand Funding in the amount of $22,880.43 to purchase lifeguard chair, full deck equipment, bulletin board, recycling brochures, trailer, trash receptacle, and picnic tables.
So moved.
Second.
Do we want to bring Keith up, talk about all of these that we're doing?
Sure.
Good morning, Mr. Bailey.
Good morning, Keith Bailey, Solid Waste Director, how are we doing this morning?
Good, are you counting down the days?
What's that?
Are you counting down the days?
Oh, it's getting short, my dear. It's getting short.
He's getting paroled.
You get to be my age, you begin to wonder. First one you have this morning is the City of Amherst Community Grant, they have outlined the, most of the equipment that's being purchased is recycled content equipment for their parks, lifeguard stand, panel board, bulletin board that will go up there, it's made out of recycled products. They're doing a lot of work with stormwater, and there's a stormwater brochure they're printing as well, and there's actually some water retention barrels being bought for the site, for the park as well, so, doing a lot of work to their park to improve it with our dollars, so that's great.
Wonderful.
The next one you have on your thing is, Lord, is Avon Lake. Avon Lake is continuing on with Miller Park, improvements there, they're replacing the old chain link fence with new plastic lumber fence and posts, that will be the mainstay of their project for 42,433.15. Next one is Grafton Village, Grafton Village has put their money towards a multitude of things, some park improvements, but they're also gonna do some improvements to their break area and their employee areas and the wastewater treatment plant with this money, sort of benches and tables. And last but not least is City of Alariah, the largest grant today to be voted on, and they have a multitude of things, their two largest items, of course, are Otter Barn Park, there's gonna be some development there, where they're gonna buy some additional equipment and materials for that park, there's gonna be all the planters downtown Alariah, the old concrete ones that are decaying, replaced with new synthetic plastic ones, they're made out of recycled plastic. They have three other campaigns they're working on right now with the committee, they're really taking this to heart about residuals, and Ted and I know what we're talking about, we talk about this in policy committee, these are the items that go into your recycling that don't get recycled, okay? They end up in the landfill. So they're gonna do a three-pronged campaign, Alariah is, and you'll have the authorization to review these before they go up and go live. They're gonna redo their website portion about recycling, and you'll get a chance to review that before it goes live, they're gonna do a social marketing piece, they spent $7,000 on that, and you'll see that before it goes live, and also the last one is traditional advertising they'll be doing throughout the year, you'll get preapproval on that as well.
I gotta ask you what an outdoor planes are.
It's planes.
Planters, okay. I was like, okay.
Pretty cheap plane.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, we're gonna just fly over people and check their garbage or something. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Madam Clerk. We do read the agenda occasionally. The, of course, the branding issue is going to be closely monitored, correct?
Yes, that's the reason, seeking preapproval on all that.
Okay, and that's what we go out to all of these grants, so that we, they understand, we had that meeting with them, they understand the need to share with the community how these issues are being funded and to bring greater understanding of the relationship between the county, the Solid Waste Department, and the local community.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve the Avon Lake 2018 Community Incentive Grand Funding in the amount of $42,433.15 to purchase funds and signage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Grafton Village 2018 Community Incentive Grand Funding in the amount of $5,498.68 to purchase tables, bike rack, benches, trash receptacles, parking stops, and recycling brochures.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Alariah 2018 Community Incentive Grand Funding in the amount of $67,178.96 to decrete the website on proper disposal, social media marketing, advertising, outdoor furniture for Auburn Park, outdoor plants, and yard waste bags.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So have plants or planters?
I think it's supposed to be planters.
It is planters.
It could be planters. Plants, planters.
Okay.
Had an R, added an S. Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under workforce development, renew the MOU with LCC Aspire program to assist Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency in providing academic skill supplement for employment and training services to participants deemed in need by the staff of the Ohio Means Jobs. Effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30, 2019, WDA will reimburse LCC Aspire when invoiced to cover all costing incurred, not to exceed $24,050 to provide the skill enhancement as defined.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez, you want to talk about the MOU with workforce development?
Number 18?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? It's an ongoing program, the, you know, we've had this relationship for a number of years, you realize that, especially with the youth component, there's always a skill enhancement that's necessary, and we're doing the ACT, Community Ready, and we're hoping to meet our last milestone by the fall, so we're picking up a little bit of steam in this program. I would like to be able to, at the National ACT Conference, indicate that we're, we're 100% compliant with our, with our goals as an ACT-ready community, and these skills, this is what we're doing with them right now, so we can enhance the skills, you know, they go on, they do the skill assessment piece, and then they get rated as a gold, a platinum, and so forth, so we assist them, and that's what this is for.
And youth is up to age 24?
Yes, up to age 24, and, you know, when you say 24, if they're in a program, it could be running a little longer, you can't cut somebody off.
Just 'cause they turned 25.
Of course they turned, yeah, they were enrolled at 24 and you just stop at 25, so normally it's funded until the end of the program, now, we don't do long, long programming when they're at 24, we have dislocated worker dollars and so forth that we can use an adult education fund, so we have to, we do the balancing act, but generally speaking, 24 is where we're capping out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Extend and amend the interagency agreement with Lorraine County Port Authority for CCMEP work experience payments. Amendment includes both TANF and WEOL funds, work experience assignments, reimburse port authority for payments made to CCMEP participants for wages paid, and all other payroll-related expenses, in addition to 5% administration fee, and the total amount not to exceed $626,583.60 effective June 1st, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
This is, if you remember, we used to be able to do summer work, excuse me, I have a very bad cold this morning, so I apologize, you may be emceeing on Saturday. The, it, so we used to do summer work for the youth in Lorraine County, and those programmings became unavailable, some of them became nonpermissible under the WEOL Act. Under CSEMP, we took over the TANF at the Workforce Development Agency, this is really just a new look at the summer employment program that used to be in place, we call it, now we call it work experience, we've probably already enrolled, the emails keep coming in, over 100 youth in work experience, and we're continuing, each week, WDA continues to send me new lists for work experience, just a different definition, a similar thing, trying to get some young folks that are transitioning into work, teach them how to keep employment in a workplace, and mentor them, it's really important, especially in, I believe, committed to the youth that are still basically in school, that need to understand they need to stay in school, but they also need to make a little bit of money over the summer, and then occupy themselves over the summer, so, it's working real well, and you know, we funded the youth camps a couple weeks ago, and they deal with younger, much younger youth than we do, but.
I thought we rescinded that.
We rescinded the mentoring and tutoring contracts, and they're gonna go back out in July with a new RFP for those, but the summer camp we approved, and the big ones with the Boys and Girls Club, obviously, so you take the summer youth, excuse me, the summer camp program, you take the work experience program, and we have a lot of opportunity for folks to be busying themselves in a better manner than just, you know, looking for some trouble on a street corner somewhere for lack of another description, so, I think it's a great program, and I'm glad we're able to get that, you can see that between this and the summer camp program, it's about 1.2 million, 1.3 million dollars worth of activities, and these are not local dollars, and they indicate that these are all dollars that we don't, we don't use them, we don't get them from the federal government.
So if somebody, a youth comes, can they come in off the street and just go to Jobs Ohio and?
Well, they have to be qualified, they have to, they have to be, they'll have to qualify, and it's not terribly hard to qualify, but yes, they have to qualify under WEOL or under TANF, and there's a process for that, so I wish it was as easy as we just had a pool of money, and if you were X age, we could put you into work experience, it's not quite that easy, it's targeted money, but we're trying to get a big net out there so we can capture as many people as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve and extend purchase service agreement with vocal language services with funds available through TANF and WEOL to provide language interpreter services for limited English-speaking persons at a cost of 99 cents per minute, that extension will be effective through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under domestic relations, approve request of funding in the amount of $234,092.46 from the Victim of Crime Act, State Victim Assistance Act grant. This grant is used for salaries and benefits of a program manager, volunteer coordinator, and program aide for Voices for Children and No County General Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter a renewal operating agreement with Airmark Correctional Services, LLC, to provide food service for the detention home and residential complex, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and contains a 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Baylo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Do you want to go into the program now?
Yeah. Ms. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Brandy.
I'm Brandy Schnell, the Community Outreach Coordinator for Lorraine County Solid Waste, and it's time once again for our, can't do that, I'm trying to get it to come up, I'm sorry, help me.
It's okay.
Okay, so I want that up there, there it is. Okay, so, I, we had a, we had a contest in the schools, all of Lorraine County schools were eligible, grades first through 12th, and we had 625 entries, Commissioner Kukowski and I judged the contest, it was difficult as it is every year, but we were able to come up with 13 winners, one for the cover of the 2019 calendar, and one for each month of the year. We have several of the winners here with us today, not everybody could make it, but as I go through the winners and show you the winning pictures, if that student is here, they will come up, and if I can ask Commissioner Kukowski to come down and hand their certificate to them, I don't believe our cover artist is here, Angela Valdez, a 11th grader from Lorraine High School, but that just fit perfectly for our cover, so, that is the first one. Our January winner is Lindsay Graber, a 10th grader from Lorraine High School, I also don't believe Lindsay is here, Lindsay, no, she did not say she would be here today, so.
That's cool.
February, Olivia Fit, a 3rd grader from North Ridgeville Academic Center, Olivia is here. No. The winners are receiving a $25 check as well as a certificate of appreciation from the County Commissioners and a copy of their picture. When the calendars are printed, each winner will get a dozen calendars to share with their family and friends.
First of all, let's.
March is Exander Natal, 7th grader from Horizon Science Academy in Lorraine, and Exander is here. April, Lauren Hesse, a 5th grader from St. Joseph's School in Avon Lake, is Lauren here today? Nope, Lauren is not able to make it, I will send them their certificates after the meeting. Our main artist is Alyssa Vocare, a 4th grader from Erieview Elementary School, which is in Avon Lake, and Alyssa is here. There is a lot of good detail in this one.
Yeah.
We have trash cans for a reason, it says.
Yeah.
And we will get all the pictures put up on our website as well. For June, we have Isadora Yanos-Chirby, a 1st grader from Lake Ridge Academy, which is in North Ridgeville.
I haven't shown any kids, I'm just showing all the pictures. Very cool.
This is definitely one of very home podcasts. Yeah, wow. July is Angelia Otero, she's a 12th grader from Lorraine High School, she's not here, she had to work, you know, she graduated, and she's at work, so.
Seven, 100?
Uh, no, uh-uh, no, we loved her for the t-shirt contest, but, yeah. For August, we have Madison Hembray, a 5th grader from McKinley Elementary School, which is in Alariah, Madison's here, she's supposed to be here, okay, Madison did not make it, absolutely. September, Erin Kraus, a 4th grader from Windsor Elementary School here in Alariah, and Erin is here.
Hi, how are you?
Erin was very excited to see the dog this morning.
Did you take the dog home, Mom? Yeah, Mom, no, it's not, it's not the dog, Mom.
October, Peyton Tackett, a 7th grader from Keystone Middle School in LaGrange, come on up, Peyton. November, we have Sophia Amberco, a 2nd grader from Midview North Elementary School in Grafton, I believe she had another, she might have been on vacation, I believe. In December, we have Maddie Knopf, a 12th grader from Alariah Catholic High School. Okay, alright, I believe so, yeah, we went through them all, I wanna, I wanna thank you all for your support, Commissioners, of this contest, we enjoy having it every year, and the students certainly enjoy it as well.
How many years we've been doing this now?
Pardon?
Are we like on the 10th annual calendar or something?
Yeah, we've been doing it for years, so I've been here for 13 years, and we've done it every year that I've been here, so it's going strong, and yes, the calendars will get printed and they will go to them, I do want to give all of our winners here a round of applause. Okay, thank you so much. Do you want to give them a minute, if anybody wanted to leave, but if they want to stay, you know?
They've been very patient through this.
Government in action.
I thought it was a comedy show.
Thank you all for participating. One of the fun things I get to do in my job is.
You didn't want to take a picture with all the winners?
I did.
One at a time. Oh, yeah, I thought you'd do a group picture with.
The cover, and 12.
Yeah, we have 12.
612, I can't be sure.
Oh, I didn't see the rest of it. I just saw the 13 winners, yeah.
Isn't that how it always goes, though?
Yes. Make 13 happy and 600 mad, right?
I think you should take all the calendars that we've done and then pick some of the top ones out of all the calendars, and maybe do something different with them.
15th anniversary. Yeah, well, we try to pick some from every grade level, so, you know, like you saw that one with the face, you know, of course, that's gonna, they're older, so theirs is gonna be better, but, really nice artwork. Really nice artwork.
Madam Clerk?
Where Mr. Cordez?
I yield to counsel. Thank you.
Counsel.
Other than discussing pending litigation, the executive, executive session, I yield to counsel as well.
Well, you yield to.
You, who are you gonna yield to, Dan?
You're my counsel. You're the counsel.
Okay, I yielded. I meant to yield to the commission.
There you go. He's new, we'll trade him.
Yeah, not enough coffee. Give me a break, you know?
Commissioners report.
Well, we have our ice cream trail that's going on right now through September the third. There's thirteen ice cream parlors that are participating and you can go to Visit Lorraine County's Facebook page or their website to get the scoop on the details. And then King of Wings actually starts tomorrow. It's, uh, June twenty-first through July first. And find out which restaurants are participating also at Visit Lorraine County. Um, you can try out wings for seven dollars for a pound of wings and a dollar off of an Ohio craft beer. And the first two hundred and fifty people that, uh, visit all six will get a T-shirt. And then, of course, we've been talking about this Saturday will be the courthouse ribbon cutting. Uh, activities start at five-thirty and there's a lot of fun for the whole family with pizza and hot dogs and popcorn and drinks. And, um, then the ceremonies for the World War Two Memorial and Workers Memorial, the rededications of those. And then the unveiling of the new police and fire memorial, which is going to be amazing. So I'm looking forward to Saturday and.
Followed by the lighting of the historical courthouse.
Right.
So.
Very end, the grand finale.
We'll be, we'll be lighting that and we'll be going through a couple lighting scenarios, uh, because they're LED lights. So you can change them up a bit, um, and that'll happen upon, uh, conclusion of the parade of lights. And the respect we're gonna pay to the, to the police and fire memorial and then we'll move to the front of the courthouse through the lighting. It's gonna, I think it's gonna be pretty nice.
Also, there will be tours of the courthouse and then also the trolley will be going around and you could actually tour the transportation center as well.
Well, there's a small museum in there. People don't realize that. Now, you're not gonna spend more than five, ten minutes going through there.
See what it looks like and.
Right, there's historical artifacts, uh, from transportation in Lorraine County. So we'll run the trolley, uh, beginning at five-thirty on the loop. You can also stop at the New Park downtown. The, the memorials are really nice to, the, excuse me, the.
Murals.
Murals.
Murals. That's what you did to me.
I'm telling you. That kind of day.
The, the murals are really nice. They did a really fine job down there at the, the New Park. So we'll, we'll stop there if anybody wants to get out and look at what's going on there too.
That's it.
Cover, Commissioner Kukowski covered a lot of things, but also we had Kiwanis Strawberry Festival. Congratulations to them. They're a great turnout. Zach Space was in town last week, uh, at Mexican Mutual, uh, talking about his race for auditor. And also Commissioner Lundey and I attended the Black River Landing City of Lorraine Investors Meeting. Uh, like to thank Don Romancik and our Community Development Department with everything they do with it. Lorraine County Port Authority, Lorraine City Port Authority, and of course, City of Lorraine. And we have another one coming up July twenty-sixth that I'm getting a lot of excitement. Phone Cushman Wakefield's contacted me. My son's bringing a team from Huntington. So I think we're talking about the opportunities, owns the ability to invest in, uh, downtown Lorraine and the opportunities there. Also, congratulations, Judge Jim Walter and his wife Dawn's daughter Haley got married this past Saturday. Very nice. Thank, congratulations to Haley and Lucas. So, end of my report.
I'd just like to add, uh, that we want the families to come out on Saturday, bring the kids. Uh, we're going to have, uh, hot dogs and pizza and.
I ordered two thousand hot dogs.
I know, we gotta move hot dogs.
Kayla's gonna look pretty, pretty, pretty funny trying to eat them all, so.
Yeah, and we're also going, going to have, uh, face painting available and, uh, what does the swing, this city swing?
Big City Swing Band.
Big City Swing Band, which has quite a following, uh, they'll be playing. So, uh, um, we're saying a lot of prayers for good weather on Saturday so far. Mother Nature's not, uh.
I looked at the weather. It's not, uh, hopefully, uh, Jim Cantore is a little off.
Yeah, right.
Uh, because, uh, it predicting rain on Saturday and yesterday was a ninety-two percent chance. And that's decreased a little bit, but, uh, we've still gotta fingers crossed. We have a small backup plan, but for as big as this is, backing it all up is almost impossible. So, uh, Commissioner, you better get that big knife and fork out for those hot dogs.
Not a problem.
The, the, you know, the pizza's by order, so we're okay there, but.
Well, the weather's just fake news half the time.
Uh, but, but Commissioner Lundey, we, we, we will try to do our best we can if, if it rains. But I know it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit more challenging to get all these events done.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be scattered rain, scattered storms, and I was looking and, you know, I mean, it's still too far off to really.
It is.
Accurately predict what's going to be going on, but, uh, at least now it looks like the rain may be the earlier part of the day and it won't be as bad come the evening, so, but the, uh, family activities start at five-thirty. Uh, the actual ceremonial events start at seven. And, um, I think the, the kids in particular will really like the, uh, the parade of lights probably for the, uh.
And there'll be some static displays in the court, uh, the courthouse parking lot. We'll have, they can climb on some vehicles, go through the command post. Uh, I think we're trying to get the, the big tank out and I'm not sure how we're doing with that.
Yeah, the SWAT vehicle.
Something, whatever is that big.
Right.
So we, we'll have some things for them to do and there'll be some law enforcement out and about, so it could be, it could be a really fun day.
Yeah, so we encourage everyone to come out. I know we did a taping at WEOL the other day to, uh, to explain all the festivities. Um, also held a Lundey Listen Session in my office last Wednesday. Uh, congratulations to the Kiwanis with the strawberry festival. I would say that's the one day during the year where I do not eat dinner. I just go over and have my, uh, strawberries and ice cream and live off the sugar buzz for the rest of the day. Congratulations to Zach Space, uh, on a nice event over at Mexican Mutual. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, do meet him. Uh, he's running for state auditor. Really a well-organized event with our community development, economic development staff, also the Port Authority, the City of Lorraine, uh, for the expression of interest. Uh, six very strong, uh, potential development sites that we had individuals take a look at. And a lot of good things going on in, in Lorraine. Another example of how this board continues to work in partnership, um, with our communities. Uh, also had the opportunity to attend the new Avon Fitness Court, which, uh, opened on Friday. They had the Fire Department versus Police Department, some fitness drills over there. Um, it's located near the city pool, which is behind the post office there off of Detroit Road, so if you get a chance, check it out. And it is, wow, it's a first-class fitness court. It's, it's amazing how it's designed. It's, uh, really impressive. Uh, congratulations to the Ambassador Brothers for their successful father-daughter dance. Lots of great pictures in the paper on Sunday, uh, from that event. And congratulations to them doing so many good things in our community. Had the opportunity to attend the Nord Center seventieth anniversary dinner on Saturday night in Oberlin. Uh, very nice event, uh, the Nord Center just helping. So many people battle, uh, mental health and, and, um, sexual assault issues. And they told some of those personal stories and, uh, you realize the, the great work that they do in the community. And those three folks who were willing to have their stories shared that evening, uh, very courageous individuals to step forward to bring more attention, uh, to the need for, uh, uh, mental health services throughout the county. Uh, just wanted to give a shout out to Travis Hafner, who showed up, uh, for the Crushers game on Saturday night. And, uh, uh, after the game, well, first off, I, I think he may have gone oh-for-two or oh-for-three, but, you know, I don't think he's played since, uh, maybe twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, something like that. Uh, but very well received and my understanding was he stuck around for about two hours after the game to sign autographs. And the line was one of the longest lines, uh, uh, that's ever been seen there. But, um, they said he was just as nice as could be, just first-class guy and, uh, just everybody was, was thrilled with the evening. Made for a very nice evening. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Joe Miller, who is, uh, running to be state rep. He had a nice event the other day. And then, um, I just think that, you know, more public officials need to be speaking out on the way that we're, uh, separating children from their parents these days. Uh, this immigration policy, uh, that the president is promoting, his attorney generals promoting. Uh, and that's what it is. It's a policy. It's not the law. Is, um, quite frankly immoral. It's inhumane. Uh, this is not the America we know. I don't know about you, but, you know, anybody who has kids or nieces, nephews, just to think that anybody's okay with kids being in cages, uh, it's just wrong. It's, it's very wrong. And would encourage everyone to certainly contact the president's office directly, uh, Congress, senators. Uh, let them know there needs to be a, a stop to this. Everybody seems to be sitting on their hands right now while this continues to go on. Uh, but this is, um, you know, this is not the America we know. It's, uh, it's clearly immoral. It's inhumane and it needs to stop. That completes my report.
For correspondence?
Will the reading be waved?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Mr. Heidecker, come join us.
What an honor.
Last Saturday, we had the county shred truck.
You have to introduce yourself.
Dick Heidecker, Columbia Township trustee.
Thank you.
Last Saturday, we had the county shred truck at Columbia Township. And we put on social media and we advertised in the paper. And I don't think Columbia's gonna do it anymore because we only had eleven hundred and seventy pounds. So, and I think it's because Grafton's got theirs in two weeks. But I appreciate the Commissioners having the truck available to us. That's all I wanna say.
Okay.
Eleven seventy's better than none.
You know, interestingly, Dick, uh, some of the other communities, we have to turn folks away and they get pretty angry. Uh, because once the truck's full, we send it back over to the center.
Hey, hey, Dick, you gotta talk up here. They can't.
The, the, uh, I, I, I know, you never know who's gonna show up at the events. But you live in a township. The problem in the township, a lot of people, they, you don't have anti-burn laws for the most part. So people do a lot of burning of the documents in the unincorporated areas, so we, we tend to get less shredding in the unincorporated areas.
Their first year, two years we did it, we got about three thousand pounds. We paid for it ourselves. And then when you had the truck available, we brought it out. It's just going down more and more. Uh, this year, there was only five people from Columbia that I knew of. As, the rest were outside, but like I said, it's gotta be 'cause Grafton's got theirs going on in two weeks. But more and more people are using computers and stuff like that. So the way, we think, we think of, like you're true, we can, you can burn. So I just, you know, I heard stories about, we had two trucks in Lorraine running, ours and the city's. Westlake, they had a line. They had police and everybody. They had seven trucks.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't keep up with it in the urbanized areas.
That's what, that's what, that's what they were telling me, but it's just a shame that, yeah, we, you know, the county had three people standing there. I mean, we, the last twenty-five minutes, we did nothing, absolutely nothing. So you had three employees for eleven hundred and seventy pounds. That just doesn't work out at all. You know, it's just a waste of taxpayers' money, in my feeling, and, and the other two trustees agree with me.
Okay.
So, just to let you know.
All right, we try our best. Sometimes it doesn't work. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? I'll make a motion going executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building. Two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building. Two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Commissioner Lundey?
Our inspirational word for the day, let love be your greatest aim.
And I have the dog today. Yeah, just take your time.
Hi there. Our featured dog this week is a pit bull mix. Uh, he's about five years old, extremely friendly. He was found in Lorraine and he's available this Friday, looking for a good home. This is a great dog. Look at him, see? I think whoever wins the coloring contest should take the dog home, though. All right, if this isn't quite your cup of tea, we got plenty of other dogs. Come on, buddy. Let's go.
It reminds me of the Dog Whisperers dog. Called him Daddy, I think.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
Good dog.
Yeah, very nice dog.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, we do have a presentation at nine forty-five for the ca- calendar contest winners.
Okay.
Under Resolutions Number One, we have no investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you. Commissioner Kala, I do have a number of personnel issues, potential hires, purchasing, community development. Uh, maybe it's solid waste. Um, also, uh, two pending legal matters and a, uh, sale of real estate. All of those matters are allowed under Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, talk about those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of June thirteen?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized payment of a thousand dollars to Boyer and Cool Home for Funerals Lorraine for an indigent veteran, James Alex Kowalski Junior, Elyria, and corns with URC fifty-nine and one point two five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Adopting the procedures from, from Lorraine County Chiefs Law Enforcement Association and Lorraine County Fire Chiefs Association. I'm placing the name of deceased Lorraine County law enforcement officers and firefighters and emergency medical service personnel on Lorraine County Law Enforcement Firefighter Memorial Wall.
So moved.
Second.
Jim, you wanna talk about this, how your discussions were with police and fire in regards to how they're going to, who goes on the wall so there's no misconceptions? I mean, we're gonna have some that are, may have been Lorraine County residents, but aren't gonna be on the wall because it wasn't in Lorraine County or they were working for a Lorraine County.
You want me to explain that? You just explained.
I, I think you'll do it more legally.
The, the, uh, the memorial belongs to the county, belongs vis-à-vis the Commissioners to the residents of Lorraine County. However, selection of, uh, the, the, um, those brave souls that go on that wall will have the brass tags. They're not gonna be on right now. We're having those made. We just finished the list. We have the list for fire and police of the fallen. Uh, the selection and, and, uh, how that happens will be through the Lorraine County Police Chiefs Association and the Lorraine County Fire Chiefs Association. And they have.
And they have adopted standards that they use, those standards pretty much are recognized nationally as guidelines, so that we don't, do not get into a push and pull on who gets on the wall and who doesn't. We'll have very limited ability, and so we should have limited ability to decide those matters. Hopefully, they'll be able to take care of any disagreements among themselves, so that we don't have to get involved. That's why I asked that they develop these standards, and that we ratify them by resolution, so that there was a clear understanding of the criteria and an operating procedure for this. I do not want what is going to be a wonderful memorial to those that have given the ultimate sacrifice to become a disagreement point where it becomes a political football. I don't mean just by politicians, I mean with anybody. So, that's really what it's all about, and I was pretty insistent upon this before we actually did the dedication. I really like working with those associations, but there are sometimes disagreements between what they want. And also, you know, we've included EMS on the fireside, so they take care of fire and EMS, and then, of course, you have the police, and that is just the police side.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, now, I had someone ask whose names will be on the wall, and I said, referred them to the Police Chief and the Fire Chiefs Association, so that they could explain what that's going to be, and, but it's important to work this all out in advance. I mean, for instance, if somebody's from Lorraine County, and, you know, sadly, they die in the line of duty in North Carolina, that's probably, a name that probably wouldn't be eligible.
For the most part, I don't believe so. Again, they, the associations probably will occasionally have to mitigate or extend the rate circumstances, but it's best that the law enforcement take care of law enforcement, and fire take care of fire and EMS, and we have little to do other than go out there and pay our respects. So, we're looking forward to our, you know, we're gonna read off all the names Saturday night, of the fallen as far back in Lorraine County's history as we can. There's been a lot of research done, I'm sure that there may be something we missed, but these guys have worked hard to go all the way back to the beginning of Lorraine County and try to capture those brave souls that fell in the line of duty.
Looking forward to Saturday night.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under job and family authorization agreement with Cronus, Inc., in the amount of $17,502.53 for the annual cloud hosting WTC of the Cronus Timekeeping System. Authorized director to ex scan bath with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve Amherst City 2018 Community Incentive grant funding in the amount of $22,880.43 to purchase lifeguard chair, full deck equipment, bulletin board, recycling brochures, trailer, trash receptacle, and picnic tables.
So moved.
Second.
Do we wanna bring Keith up, talk about all of these that we're doing? Good morning, Mr. Bailey.
Good morning. Keith Bailey, Solid Waste Director. How are we doing this morning?
Good, are you counting down the days?
What's that?
Are you counting down the days?
Oh, it's getting short, my dear. It's getting short.
He's getting paroled.
You get to be my age, you begin to wonder. First one you have this morning is the City of Amherst Community Grant. They have outlined the, most of the equipment that's being purchased is recycled content equipment for their parks, lifeguard stand, panel board, bulletin board that will go up there, that's made out of recycled products. They're doing a lot of work with stormwater, and there's a stormwater brochure they're printing as well, and there's actually some water retention barrels being bought for the site, for the park as well. So, doing a lot of work to their park to improve it with our dollars, so that's great. The next one you have on your thing is, Lord, is Avon Lake. Avon Lake is continuing on with Miller Park, improvements there. They're replacing the old chain link fence with new plastic lumber fence and posts. That will be the mainstay of their project for 42,433.15. Next one is Grafton Village. Grafton Village has put their money towards a multitude of things, some park improvements, but they're also gonna do some improvements to their break area and their employee areas at the wastewater treatment plant with this money, sort of benches and tables. And last but not least is City of Alariah, the largest grant today to be voted on, and they have a multitude of things. Their two largest items, of course, are Otter Barn Park, there's gonna be some development there, where they're gonna buy some additional equipment and materials for that park. There's gonna be all the planners downtown Alariah, the old concrete ones that are decaying, replaced with new synthetic, plastic ones are made out of recycled plastic. They have three other campaigns they're working on right now with a committee. They're really taking this to heart about residuals, and Ted and I know what we're talking about. We talk about this in policy committee. These are the items that go into your recycling that don't get recycled, okay? They end up in the landfill. So, they're gonna do a three-prong campaign, Alariah is, and you'll have the authorization to review these before they go up and go live. They're gonna redo their website portion about recycling, and you'll get a chance to review that before it goes live. They're gonna do a social marketing piece, it's been $7,000 on that, and you'll see that before it goes live. And also, the last one is traditional advertising they'll be doing throughout the year, you'll get preapproval on that as well.
I gotta ask you what an outdoor plane's are.
It's planes.
Planers.
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, okay.
It's a pretty cheap plane.
Yeah, it's a pretty, yeah, I was thinking, you know, we're gonna just fly over people and check their garbage or something. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Madam Clerk. We do read the agenda occasionally. The, of course, the branding issue is going to be closely monitored, correct?
Yes, that's the reason, seeking preapproval and all that.
Okay, and that's what's regard to all of these grants, so that we, they understand, we had that meeting with them, they understand the need to share with the community how these issues are being funded, and to bring greater understanding of the relationship between the county, the Solid Waste Department, and the local community.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve the Avon Lake 2018 Community Incentive grant funding in the amount of $42,433.15 to purchase funds and signage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Grafton Village 2018 Community Incentive grant funding in the amount of $5,498.68 to purchase tables, bike rack, benches, trash receptacles, parking stops, and recycling brochures.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Alariah 2018 Community Incentive grant funding in the amount of $67,178.96 to decreed the website on proper disposal, social media marketing, advertising, outdoor furniture for Auburn Park, outdoor plants, and yard waste bags.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that plants or planters?
I think it's supposed to be planters.
It is planters.
It could be planters. Plants, planters. Had an R, added an S. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under workforce development, renew the MOU with LCC Aspire program to assist Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency in providing academic skill supplement for employment and training services to participants deemed in need by the staff of the Ohio Means Jobs. Effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, WDA will reimburse LCC Aspire when invoiced to cover all costs incurred, not to exceed $24,050, to provide the skill enhancement as defined.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, you wanna talk about the MOU with workforce development?
Number 18?
The college, yeah.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. It's an ongoing program. The, you know, we've had this relationship for a number of years. You realize that, especially when the youth component, there's always a skill enhancement that's necessary, and we're doing the ACT, community ready, and we're hoping to meet our last milestone by the fall. So, we're picking up a little bit of steam in this program. I would like to be able to, at the National ACT Conference, indicate that we're 100% compliant with our goals as an ACT-ready community, and these skills, this is what we're doing with them right now, so we can enhance the skills. You know, they go on, they do the skill assessment piece, and then they get rated as a gold, or platinum, and so forth. So, we assist them, and that's what this is for.
And youth is up to age 24?
Yes, up to age 24, and, you know, when you say 24, if they're in a program, it could be running a little longer, you can't cut somebody off.
Just 'cause they turned 25.
Of course, they turned, yeah, they enrolled at 24, and you just stop at 25. So, normally, it's funded until the end of the program. Now, we don't do long, long programming when they're at 24, we have dislocated worker dollars and so forth that we can use in adult education funds. So, we have to, we do the balancing act, but generally speaking, 24 is where we're capping out. Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Extend and amend the interagency agreement with Lorraine County Port Authority for CCMEP work experience payments. Amendment includes both TANF and WEO funds, work experience assignments, reimburse Port Authority for payments made to CCMEP, participants for wages paid, and all other payroll-related expenses, in addition to 5% administration fee, and the total amount not to exceed $626,583.60 effective June 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
This is, if you remember, we used to be able to do summer work. Excuse me, I have a very bad cold this morning, so I apologize. You may be emceeing on Saturday. The, it, so we used to do summer work for the youth in Lorraine County, and those programmings became unavailable, some of them became nonpermissible under the WEOL Act. Under CSEMP, we took over the TANF at the Workforce Development Agency. This is really just a new look at the summer employment program that used to be in place. We call it, now we call it work experience. We've probably already enrolled, the emails keep coming in, over 100 youth in work experience, and we're continuing, each week, the WDA continues to send me new lists for work experience. Just a different definition, a similar thing, trying to get some young folks that are transitioning into work, teach them how to keep employment in a workplace, and mentor them. It's really important, especially in, I believe, committed to the youth that are still basically in school, that need to understand they need to stay in school, but they also need to make a little bit of money over the summer, and then occupy themselves over the summer. So, it's working real well, and you know, we funded the youth camps a couple weeks ago, and they deal with younger, much younger youth than we do, but you.
I thought we rescinded that.
We rescinded the mentoring and tutoring contracts, and they're gonna go back out in July with a new RFP for those, but the summer camp we approved, and the big ones with the Boys and Girls Club, obviously. So, you take the summer youth, excuse me, the summer camp program, you take the work experience program, and we have a lot of opportunity for folks to be busying themselves in a better manner than just, you know, looking for some trouble on a street corner somewhere, for lack of another description. So, I think it's a great program, and I'm glad we're able to get that. You can see that between this and the summer camp program, it's about 1.2 million, 1.3 million dollars worth of activities, and these are not local dollars, and they indicate that these are all dollars that we don't, we don't use them, we don't get them from the federal government.
So, if somebody, a youth comes, can they come in off the street and just go to Jobs Ohio and?
Well, they have to be qualified. They have to, they have to be, they'll have to qualify, and it's not terribly hard to qualify, but yes, they have to qualify under WEOL or under TANF, and there's a process for that. So, I wish it was as easy as we just had a pool of money, and if you were X age, we could put you into work experiences. Not quite that easy, it's targeted money, but we're trying to get a big net out there so we can capture as many people as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve and extend purchase service agreement with local language services with funds available through TANF and WEO to provide language interpreter services for illiterate English-speaking persons at a cost of 99 cents per minute. That extension will be effective through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under domestic relations, approve request of funding in the amount of $234,092.46 from the Victim of Crime Act, State Victim Assistance Act grant. This grant is used for salaries and benefits of a program manager, volunteer coordinator, and program aide, for Voices for Children and No County General Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve an interim renewal operating group with Armar Correctional Services, LLC, to provide food service for the detention home and residential complex, effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, and contains a 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
You wanna go into the program now?
Yeah. Ms. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Brandy.
I'm Brandy Schnell, the Community Outreach Coordinator for Lorraine County Solid Waste, and it's time, once again, for our, can I do that? I'm trying to get it to come up, I'm sorry. Help me, it's okay.
What do you want?
Okay, so I want that up there, there it is. Okay. So, I, we had a contest in the schools, all of Lorraine County schools were eligible, grades first through 12th, and we had 625 entries. Commissioner Kukowski and I judged the contest, it was difficult, as it is every year, but we were able to come up with 13 winners, one for the cover of the 2019 calendar, and one for each month of the year. We have several of the winners here with us today, not everybody could make it, but as I go through the winners and show you the winning pictures, if that student is here, they will come up, and if I can ask Commissioner Kukowski to come down and hand their certificate to them. I don't believe our cover artist is here, Angela Valdez, a 11th grader from Lorraine High School, but that just fit perfectly for our cover, so that is the first one. Our January winner is Lindsay Graeber, a 10th grader from Lorraine High School. I also don't believe Lindsay is here, Lindsay, no, she did not say she would be here today, No, she did not say she would be here today, so. February, Olivia Fitz, a third grader from North Ridgeville Academic Center. Olivia is here. The winners are receiving a $25 check as well as a certificate of appreciation from the county commissioners and a copy of their picture. When the calendars are printed, each winner will get a dozen calendars to share with their family and friends. March is Alexander Natal, seventh grader from Horizon Science Academy in Lorraine, and I have that same problem. April, Lauren Hesse, a fifth grader from St. Joseph's School in Avon Lake. Is Lauren here today? Nope, Lauren is not able to make it. I will send them their certificates after the meeting. Our May artist is Alyssa BoCare, a fourth grader from Erieview Elementary School, which is in Avon Lake, and Alyssa is here. There is a lot of good detail in this one.
Yeah.
We have trash cans for a reason, it says.
Yeah.
And we will get all the pictures put up on our website as well. For June, we have Isadora Yanos-Cherby, a first grader from Lake Ridge Academy, which is in North Ridgeville.
I haven't shown any kids, I'm just selling all the pictures. Very cool.
This is definitely one of our, oh my gosh. Yeah.
Wow.
July is Angelia Otero, she's a twelfth grader from Lorraine High School. She's not here, she had to work, you know, she graduated, and she's at work, so.
Seven time winner?
Uh, no, uh-uh. No, we loved her for the T-shirt contest, but, yeah. For August, we have Madison Hembray, a fifth grader from McKinley Elementary School, which is in Aleria. Madison's here, she's supposed to be here. Okay, Madison did not make it, absolutely. September, Erin Kraus, a fourth grader from Windsor Elementary School here in Aleria, and Erin is here.
Hi, how are you?
Erin was very excited to see the dog this morning.
Did you put the dog on, Mom? Yeah, Mom, no, it's not, it's not the dog.
October, Peyton Tackett, a seventh grader from Keystone Middle School in LaGrange. November, we have Sophia Andereco, a second grader from Midview North Elementary School in Grafton. I believe she had another, she might have been on vacation, I believe. In December, we have Maddie Knopf, a twelfth grader from Aleria Catholic High School. Okay, all right, I believe so, yeah, we went through them all. I want to, I want to thank you all for your support, Commissioners, of this contest. We enjoy having it every year, and the students certainly enjoy it as well.
How many years have we been doing this now?
Pardon?
Are we like on the tenth annual calendar or something?
Yeah, we've been doing it for years, so I've been here for thirteen years, and we've done it every year that I've been here, so it's, it's going strong.
Yeah.
And yes, the calendars will get printed, and they will go to them. I do want to give all of our winners here a round of applause if we could. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want to give them a minute if anybody wanted to leave, but if they want to stay, you know?
They've been very patient through this, yeah.
I thought it was a comedy show.
Thank you all for participating. One of the fun things I get to do in my jobs.
You didn't want to take a picture all the way?
I did.
One at a time. Oh, yeah, I told you, do a group picture with.
The cover. Twelve.
Yeah, we have twelve.
Six hundred and twelve, yeah, but you can't.
Oh, I didn't see. Well. I just saw the thirteen winners, yeah.
Isn't that how it always goes, though?
Yes. Make thirteen happy and six hundred mad, right? We'll just put thirteen to one. Yeah.
I think you should take all the calendars that we've done, and then pick some of the top ones out of all the calendars, and maybe do a, something different with them.
Fifteenth anniversary.
Yeah. Well, we try to pick some from every grade level, so, you know, like you saw that one that, with the face, you know, of course, that's going to, they're older, so their, theirs is going to be better, but.
That's powerful.
Really nice artwork.
Madam Clerk?
Or Mr. Cordez?
I yield to counsel, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel.
Mr. Pedicord?
Other than discussing pending litigation, executive, executive session, I yield to counsel as well.
Well, you yield to.
You, who are you going to yield to, Dan?
You're my counsel, you're the counsel.
Okay, I yielded, I meant to yield to the commissioner.
There you go.
He's new, we'll trade him. Yeah, not enough coffee, give me a break, you know?
Commissioners' report.
Well, we have our ice cream trail that's going on right now through September the third. There's thirteen ice cream parlors that are participating, and you can go to Visit Lorraine County's Facebook page or their website to get the scoop on the details. And then King of Wings actually starts tomorrow, it's June 21st through July 1st, and find out which restaurants are participating also at Visit Lorraine County. You can try out wings for seven dollars for a pound of wings and a dollar off of an Ohio craft beer, and the first two hundred and fifty people that visit all six will get a T-shirt. And then, of course, we've been talking about this Saturday, will be the courthouse ribbon cutting. Activities start at 5:30, and there's a lot of fun for the whole family with pizza and hot dogs and popcorn and drinks, and then the ceremonies for the World War II Memorial and Workers Memorial, the rededications of those, and then the unveiling of the new police and fire memorial, which is going to be amazing. So I'm looking forward to Saturday and.
Followed by the lighting of the historical courthouse.
Right. At the very end, the grand finale.
We'll be, we'll be lighting that, and we'll be going through a couple lighting scenarios because they're LED lights, so you can.
Change them on.
Change them up a bit, and that'll happen upon conclusion of the parade of lights and the respect we're going to pay to the, to the police and fire memorial, and then we'll move to the front of the courthouse to do the lighting. It's going, I think it's going to be pretty nice.
Yeah, and I mentioned, also, well, there'll be tours of the courthouse, and then also the trolley will be going around, and you could actually tour the transportation center as well, it's another.
Well, there's a small museum in there, people don't realize that. Now, you're not going to spend more than five, ten minutes going through there.
But at least go in and see what it looks like and.
Right, there's historical artifacts from transportation in Lorraine County, and so we'll run the trolley beginning at 5:30 on the loop. You can also stop at the New Park downtown. The memorials are really nice, the, excuse me, the.
Murals.
The murals. That's what you did to me. I'm telling you, it's that kind of day. The, the murals are really nice. They did a really fine job down there at the, the New Park, so we'll, we'll stop there if anybody wants to get out and look at what's going on there, too.
That's it.
Wonderful. Commissioner Kukowski covered a lot of the things, but also we had Quanis Strawberry Festival, congratulations to them, they're a great turn up. Zach Space was in town last week at Mexican Mutual, talking about his race for auditor. And also, Commissioner Lundey and I attended the Black River Landing City of Lorraine Investors Meeting. I'd like to thank Don Romancik and our Community Development Department with everything they do with it, Lorraine County Port Authority, Lorraine City Port Authority, and of course, City of Lorraine. And we have another one coming up July 26th that I'm getting a lot of excitement. Phone, Cushman Wakefield's contacted me, my son's bringing a team from Huntington, so I think we're talking about the opportunities, owns the ability to invest in downtown Lorraine and the opportunities there. Also, congratulations, Judge Jim Walter and his wife Dawn's daughter Haley got married this past Saturday, very nice. Thank, congratulations to Haley and Lucas. So, end of my report.
I'd just like to add that we want the families to come out on Saturday, bring the kids. We're going to have hot dogs and pizza and.
I ordered two thousand hot dogs.
I know, we've got to move hot dogs here.
Kayla's going to look pretty, pretty, pretty funny trying to eat them all, so.
Yeah, and we're also going, going to have face painting available, and what does the swing, the city swing?
Big City Swing Band.
Big City Swing Band, which has quite a following, they'll be playing, so we're saying a lot of prayers for good weather on Saturday so far. Mother Nature's not.
I looked at the weather, it's not, hopefully, Jim Cantori is a little off.
Yeah, right.
Because predicting rain on Saturday, and yesterday was a ninety percent chance, and that's decreased a little bit, but we've still got our fingers crossed. We have a small backup plan, but for as big as this is, backing it all up is almost impossible. So Commissioner, you better get that big knife and fork out for those hot dogs.
Not a problem.
The, the pizzas by order, so we're okay there, but.
Well, the weather's just fake news half the time.
Yeah. But, but Commissioner Lundey, we, we will try to do our best we can if, if it rains, but I know it's going to, it's going to be a little bit more challenging to get all these events done.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be scattered rain, scattered storms, and I was looking, and you know, I mean, it's still too far off to really.
It is.
Accurately predict what's going to be going on, but at least now it looks like the rain may be the earlier part of the day, and it won't be as bad come the evening, so. But the family activities start at 5:30, the actual ceremonial events start at seven, and I think the, the kids in particular will really like the, the parade of lights probably for the.
And there'll be some static displays in the court, the courthouse parking lot, we'll have, they can climb on some vehicles, go through the command post. I think we're trying to get the, the big tank out, and I'm not sure how we're doing with that.
Yeah, the SWAT vehicle.
Something, whatever is that big.
Right.
So we, we'll have some things for them to do, and there'll be some law enforcement out and about, so it could be, it could be a really fun day.
Yeah, so we encourage everyone to come out. I know we did a taping at WEOL the other day to, to explain all the festivities. Also held a Lundey Listen session in my office last Wednesday. Congratulations to the Quanis with the strawberry festival. I would say that's the one day during the year where I do not eat dinner. I just go over and have my strawberries and ice cream and live off the sugar buzz for the rest of the day. Congratulations to Zach Space on a nice event over at Mexican Mutual. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, do meet him, he's running for state auditor. Really a well-organized event with our community development, economic development staff, also the Port Authority, the City of Lorraine for the expression of interest. Six very strong potential development sites that we had individuals take a look at, and a lot of good things going on in, in Lorraine. Another example of how this board continues to work in partnership with our communities. Also had the opportunity to attend the new Avon Fitness Court, which opened on Friday. They had the fire department versus police department, some fitness drills over there. It's located near the city pool, which is behind the post office there off of Detroit Road, so if you get a chance, check it out, and it is, wow, it's a first-class fitness court. It's, it's amazing how it's designed, it's really impressive. Congratulations to the Ambassador Brothers for their successful father-daughter dance, lots of great pictures in the paper on Sunday from that event, and congratulations to them doing so many good things in our community. Had the opportunity to attend the Nord Center's 70th Anniversary Dinner on Saturday night in Oberlin. Very nice event, the Nord Center just helping so many people battle mental health and, and sexual assault issues, and they told some of those personal stories, and you realize the, the great work that they do in the community, and those three folks who were willing to have their stories shared that evening, very courageous individuals to step forward to bring more attention to the need for mental health services throughout the county. Just wanted to give a shout out to Travis Hafner, who showed up for the Crushers game on Saturday night, and after the game, well, first off, I think he may have gone 0-for-2 or 0-for-3, but you know, I don't think he's played since maybe 2010, 2011, something like that, but very well received, and my understanding was he stuck around for about two hours after the game to sign autographs, and the line was one of the longest lines that's ever been seen there. But they said he was just as nice as could be, just a first-class guy, and just everybody was, was thrilled with the evening, made for a very nice evening. Congratulations to Joe Miller, who is running to be state rep, he had a nice event the other day. And then I just think that, you know, more public officials need to be speaking out on the way that we're separating children from their parents these days. This immigration policy that the president is promoting, is the Attorney General's promoting, and that's what it is, it's a policy, it's not the law, is quite frankly immoral, it's inhumane, and this is not the America we know. I don't know about you, but you know, anybody who has kids or nieces, nephews, just to think that anybody's okay with kids being in cages, it's just wrong. It's, it's very wrong, and would encourage everyone to certainly contact the president's office directly, Congress, senators, let them know there needs to be a stop to this. Everybody seems to be sitting on their hands right now while this continues to go on, but this is, you know, this is not the America we know. It's, it's clearly immoral, it's inhumane, and it needs to stop. That completes my report.
For correspondence?
Will the reading be waved?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Alakamet?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Mr. Heidecker, come join us.
What an honor.
No, you're not allowed.
Last Saturday, we had the county shred truck.
You have to introduce yourself.
Dick Heidecker, Columbia Township trustee.
Thank you.
Last Saturday, we had the county shred truck at Columbia Township, and we put on social media, and we advertised in the paper, and I don't think Columbia's going to do it anymore because we only had 1,170 pounds. So, and I think it's because Grafton's got theirs in two weeks, but I appreciate the Commissioners having the truck available to us. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Eleven seventy's better than none.
Truck holds 10,000 pounds.
You know, interestingly, Dick, some of the other communities, we have to turn folks away, and they get pretty angry, because once the truck's full, we send it back over to the center.
You have three bins sitting there for three hours.
Hey, hey, Dick, you got to talk up here, they can't.
The, the, I, I know, you never know who's going to show up at the events, but you live in a township, the problem in the township, a lot of people, they, you don't have anti-burn laws for the most part, so people do a lot of burning of the documents in the unincorporated areas, so we, we tend to get less shredding in the unincorporated areas.
Their first year, two years we did it, we got about 3,000 pounds, we paid for it ourselves, and then when you had the truck available, we brought it out, and it's just going down more and more. This year, there was only five people from Columbia that I knew of, as, the rest were outside, but like I said, it's got to be because Grafton's got theirs going on in two weeks, but more and more people are using computers and stuff like that, so we, we think, we think of, like your tree, we can, you can burn. So I just, you know, I heard stories about, we had two trucks in Lorraine running, ours and the city's. West Lake, they had a line, they had police and everybody, they had seven trucks.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't keep up with it in the urbanized areas.
That's what, that's what, that's what they were telling me, but it's just a shame that yet we, you know, the county had three people standing there, and I mean, we, the last 25 minutes, we did nothing, absolutely nothing. So you had three employees for 1,170 pounds, that just doesn't work out at all, you know, it's just a waste of taxpayers' money, in my feeling, and the other two trustees agree with me.
Okay.
So, just to let you know.
All right, we try our best, sometimes it doesn't work. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? I'll make a motion on executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.